So, thank you again. We'll sign up sheet over here on the left and we're gonna go ahead and get started. We do have a...we're gonna be available till 6:30 today. We have a presentation that is gonna be about five, 10 minutes. We would ask that you withhold your comments until we can work our way through this short presentation on the project and then we'll open it up for comments, questions, concerns. Thank you.
Alright, well, thanks everybody for coming. I am Jeremy Walgrave with SEH and this is Jason Chaff with SEH. This is where the engineering firm working on the design of the project. And again, just a brief little presentation and then we'll have a breakout session where everybody can come and take a look at some of the graphics that we have and ask questions and provide comments. So, again, just a real quick overview. We're gonna have the steering committee just to give a quick word about the steering committee process and then, again, the purpose of the meeting. We'll just cover that real quickly and talk about some of the goals and objectives of the project. And then we'll show you a couple of concepts and talk a little bit about the feature and then we'll wrap up with the timeline of the project and some of the funding information.
Could I ask that you use one of those speakers? We've got a zillion of them around here so that they'll make sure we heard it on the recording.
You heard it.
I just packed it all up.
Okay. Are you just wanting to speak a little louder?
Yeah.
I think now that people have got their seats, it might be a lot...
Yeah, you're good. You're good?
I'm old, so I can't...
Okay, we'll speak up a little bit and we'll just ask that...it sounds like most people are in their chairs now, leaving some in the background, but I guess it's gone now. Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna hand it over and we can just sit a little bit.
So, I'm Mike Heidel. I'm one of the members of the steering committee. There's a few other members around here. Mark Assar and...
Emily Ad.
Paul, yes. Or, oh, sorry, Paul. Yeah, so what the city did is they appointed the steering committee together to investigate and come up with a plan and a need. We needed a pier of this size or a pier at all, what kind of improvements we could make on a waterfront, something that hasn't been done in a lot of years. So, the committee met multiple times. We had a good debate on what we needed, what we thought we needed, what type of structures we needed. And we came up with a consensus of what we thought would work and what we thought we needed and we'll see some drawings of that tonight. We looked at, you know, how do we pay for it? How do we maintain it? What's longevity of the structure gonna be? Those are all things that we took into account and you can see that in our design. Our design has made it last many years. My grandkid shouldn't have to shell out a dime to rebuild this dock in his lifetime either. And those are some of the major concerns we have. We wanted to make sure that the taxpayers, the rainiers, don't get saddled with a big white elephant that they have to maintain all the time. That was probably number one on our list of concerns. But we also looked at the types of uses that we would use on the dock, what amenities we would have. Do we wanna have gas sold on the dock? Do we wanna have water available for boats? Do we wanna have electricity available for boats? Do we wanna have sewage pump station available for boats? We determined that some of that stuff we did want, some we didn't. We didn't want gas on the dock. We thought that the sewage, because there is really nowhere for boats to go, sailboats, now the pontoon boats all have a lot of bathrooms and stuff like that, a place that they could pump out. The new pump out stations they have aren't like the old ones that used to have at the Hellis Boats where they had to have a vent on them and you could smell the sewage. New ones are sealed, they'll go straight into the sewer system, so there will be no odor acceptable. We thought that a hookup for electricity would be good in case somebody needed to plug in while they hold into the dock and there's ways that we can charge for these amenities too. That will help raise money for maintenance, because there's always gonna be a little bit of stuff happening to be done on the dock, like hook the floaters in the fall, hook them back up in the spring, stuff like that. So, we got a way to pay for that and we're trying to make this dock more self-sufficient than anything. So, we went through all these things that we thought we needed. We decided that with the congestion that's down there, a new boat ramp, a new location for a boat ramp. We looked at many places for that. We came up with an idea for that. But we also decided that a soft landing, which is for kayaks, canoes, stuff like that, more of a sand landing would take the place of the boat landing down there. So, there's not many of those along the lake. I think the park said we should just put one end and this would be the only one on this end where you can back up along with your kayaks and canoes or whatever and be able to leave from that dock. So, we thought that was kinda neat to have there. We're also gonna have handicap accessible lifts so people can get hooked up and lifted up and wheelchairs onto the dock, which is something that there's only one place on the lake that we have on those, and that's at the Parkhead border coming by Bay. So, we thought that was huge for this end. So, we looked at a lot of that different stuff, the maintenance and longevity and ways to pay for it and the impact. And we all know that we wanna keep the water flowing and that's part of the reason we structured that again. And the big thing too is to protect that whole bay. This is gonna be, this is gonna be a good place, you know, for you to part of your boat if a storm or something, you can ride it out here. But it's also gonna protect that whole shoreline. You can see mostly the docks in that area have been ripped out multiple times by ice waves to protect all that. That will save those property owners a lot of money and a lot of...
Alright, thank you. So, again, the real purpose here is to present some of these concepts and then just get input from folks on concerns and questions about the structure itself. Again, some of the goals and outcomes is to provide a safe harbor so there's a place for people to hang out when the weather's bad, waves are bad. It's also an amenity. It can be a gathering space for the city, also daily and overnight docking and then just a destination to visit and view the night sky. Again, it provides recreational access to the lake for motorized boats as well as canoes and kayaks and foot traffic. And then, again, another goal here is to preserve the night sky and the views of the lake and the landscape. Again, protection of the shoreline, so some of that dock will provide a barrier to waves and help break up some of the ice blows, protect the shoreline. And then, again, the style that's bin wall where it's got gaps between, you know, it's not just a solid dock. That's an important feature because it allows water to move back and forth through there. It doesn't cause erosion issues on one end or build up sediment and things like that on the other end. And again, something we're just being mindful throughout the process is just not harming the lake and not causing impacts. And again, the existing boat launch, the thought there is to convert that to a soft landing so it'd be available for kayaks, canoes, paddle boats. A little bit more about environmental protection. Again, with the bin wall style, it doesn't disrupt some of the longshore currents and movement of water along the shoreline. Another big one is there won't be fueling available on the back, so you minimize the risk of spills and issues with any kind of control oil. Just wanted to mention the new boat launch and the AIS, or Aquatic Invasive Species Wash Station. And then, at the end of the day, all of the construction and the water has to go through Minnesota DNR and US Army Corps of Engineers permitting. And so, a lot of the environmental type concerns and questions are vetted through that process. Alright, these are just some renderings of the concept at a few different angles and again, you'll see the same images over here. But again, the main T dock is the permanent structure. Then you got the finger docks that they'll be floating so they can move up and down with the water level. The ramps will have a fixed end to the dock and then there's a moving end so the ramp can move with the docks. This is a view from Screw Street, just kinda giving you an idea of what it'll look like. We looked at a few different styles of entrance and came up with a simple bollard style. Basically, that's just to keep people from trying to go out there on four-wheelers and whatever else. They'll be removable though, so there'll be a little panel lock. You can pull them out and drive maintenance vehicles out there. Again, just a little different view. You'll see there's also a couple benches on this end. You can't see this end, but there's some benches here too, so people can walk out, sit down, enjoy the view. Again, just a little different angle. This is a view from the city beach, just to kinda give a perspective of what that would look like from the beach. Yeah, yeah, let me back up here to... So, the dimensions from the start to the finish of the dock, it's about 250 feet plus or minus depending on the...
200?
250, yep. And then the width of the T from the end to the head, that's 200.
Currently, is it always an 8?
Yes.
About 8 people.
And then, this is just a rendering to show kinda the lighting style. So, again, the point being you wanna have lights out here so that if people are coming in off the lake in the dark, they can see where it's at, it's shown, but they're not uplighting, so it's not really obtrusive. It's meant to preserve that night sky. Again, we have a board over here with all, some of these different kinda design options that we have looked at, some different railing styles, different light styles. So, again, some of the features on the dock, there'll be a sanitary sewer pump out that will go to the land side. There'll be a pump station that pumps that to the main city sanitary sewer. There'll be water service and then electrical hookups so people need to plug in and charge Again, the lighting will be a style that preserves that night sky. And then, the intent at the very end of the dock is to kinda have a fishing area for people that wanna walk out and just fish off the dock. And again, the benches so that you can go out and sit out there and just enjoy. Funding, so the, there's an LCCMR grant for $762,000 that's been secured. And then, we're following a couple other options to fund the rest of the project, which is about $2.1 million. That's working through an additional ask from the LCCMR and the body of it. So, if one happens, the other one wouldn't happen. And then, timeline, we're getting into final design right now and we're expecting to have that design complete in July. We would begin permitting in June. That's usually about a 60 to 120 day process. We will have some coordination meetings earlier than June with Minnesota DNR just to help them understand what we're looking at, what we're proposing. And then, again, construction's gonna be funding dependent and I guess if some of the funding doesn't quite work out with the timing, then we'll start having discussions about it if we do certain phases such as just getting the land side utilities, water and sewer stuff ready so that the rest of the dock can be built when the funding comes to it. Last slide, we've seen a number of different ideas, names, and that the dock has been called at this point, but if you've got ideas and wanna share those ideas, feel free to share that with us. We also have some comment forums over here, so if you'd like to write down your comments or ideas on what the dock should be named, then again, we've got some forums over here that you can write down. Alright.
One thing I'd like to add to the general design, and I don't know if we touched on it in depth, but the main T, the fixed in-place dock is steel bin wall design, which you guys are familiar with like cribbing for docks. It'll be a steel bin wall or crib that's filled with a ballast like rock. And then, the deck is concrete, so that'll all be a fixed, low-maintenance facility. And then, the fingers that are tied to it, those will be floating up and down with the changes in the water elevation. I just, I don't know if we covered that, so I just wanna make this the general design intent.
Biggest thing is the ice floes.
You'd be able to take the fingers off.
The main dock.
The main dock, yes. Will stay there permanently, yes, to handle the ice floes.
And then, sorry, just question answered.
Yep.
Light house, is there any way that we could put that at the end of the dock?
Yeah.
Like the T?
Yeah.
Artificial light house?
Some of the amenities, see, we're in a preliminary design stage right now. Like Jeremy said, we're working towards June, July. And some of those final amenities are still being discussed is what can we fit? You know, what will work? What can be done? Again, it's still something that's...
But that'd be something I would, I honestly would want, because...
Yep, we've heard that multiple times.
Yep.
So, I have questions about that because the dock was originally supposed to be what? 278 feet or 378?
278 feet with what I see.
Okay, the original dock. And so, that 200 that goes across, is that steel also or that wood would be floating on? The T?
The T is concrete and steel, yes.
That's concrete and steel also. Now, the only thing that appears to be missing in all your beautiful pictures are the house boats that can stay there for two weeks. The house boats, four big large boats, that can stay there for two weeks. And I'm wondering where it is that they would stay? You are aware that that's part of the grant?
Yes.
Yeah. So, the house boats really would be, I would say, limited to the main concrete T dock. That's where the other amenities would be too.
But it seems that, I think they listed a number of house boats that could actually be there, okay?
You're correct. I don't recall the number.
It's so many. They have that 26 feet, I think, for a boat. Whether it's houseboat or something.
Yeah, but...
It's not necessarily a houseboat. It's 26 feet.
Correct. I understand that, but I'm just wondering, you know, it looks really lovely. I think until you would start adding in the boats that can be built for two weeks, that I have great concern.
But you won't necessarily be there for two weeks.
They can be there for up to two weeks.
But that decision will be made by the...
But most times I've seen, it's a bachelor party that's coming up and they're bringing people in and they're coming into there for it every time and they're leaving and going past the group.
Well, I, that doesn't answer the question though. I mean, they do say that there's room for a number of house boats there and the grant does list the...
It's not houseboats, it's 26 foot.
26 foot. Yeah, I understand.
This is more an operational thing rather than is the design comment. I think we should move past the public opinion and just let these guys do their presentation.
Yeah, this is all...
Yeah, this is gentlemen.
You're asking what a houseboat looks like. You know what a houseboat looks like?
No, I mean, I don't think there's rumors for houseboats. Mr. H.
So, this is Swenson. So, which part of the design? You said about the ice issue, so is that fine? Are you gonna anchor that to bedrock then or...
Yeah, so, we actually have, we've done a little bit of soil moring work on land and we've tried to get some better information on where the bedrock surface is out there. We have another company coming to drill specific holes along the T so that we know where the bedrock is and that... But you make a good point, it really depends on how thick the sediment is above the rock. If it's thick enough, we'll be able to set those in there without anchoring it to rock, but if there's only...
So, you're gonna force a raid on it and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and anchoring the bedrock?
Yep, yep.
I think Mike started to bring up some concern I have and after there were some reactions to the plans way back is that now you're planning on offering all kinds of services. It looks like. Now, you know, it's going to cost money to provide those services. Have to be some kind of attendant, ouster, or this is also a service, gas, natural energy?
I don't know how far along the city is with determining some of those operational questions.
Operational question, absolutely.
Yeah, this is more along the design, but how it's operated by the city is yet to really been solidified, correct?
So, yeah, we don't know whether we're gonna lose money, make money out of it, what's the maintenance, so that's up to the city?
Yeah, we're simply, yeah, we're simply presenting the design and we took the thoughts from the steering committee and we put them on paper for this meeting.
But that does worry, you have to admit, that it does worry the residents because a lot of these people promoting the project are non-residents. So, and the benefit will come to them, whereas if something goes wrong, then, you know, once again, the taxpayer is responsible for fixing it up. Rainier for years and years has provided recreation to the area and tourist parts and all the things that we can provide and it's pretty much done in all the maintenance ourselves with the rec fund, you know, for thousands. And so, you know, that kinda bothers some of us residents is that we may end up paying for a not, a not...
Bear had his hand up next. Bear, did you have a question?
Well, I would say, listen, we typically meet, I think, on the address this meeting, we have our first time on the table. And you ask for why not everyone, just who wants to say, raise your hand, you know, raise your hand and you'll be notified and you recognize you would say what you wanna say, you know, you know, there for even who, we, we, the five, it's hard to, I'd like to hear what everybody else is, it's hard to...
Excellent.
So, just raise your hand, be recognized, say what you wanna say and then let the others just hear you directly.
I'm just saying, like, a lot of these maintenance issues, service issues could be so as like a self-attack of kind of process. Could be a litoric being done with the running guard. That's a simple way to do it, but you don't need a maintenance person. Just monitor it a little bit, but you gotta check out the cameras, no need to, that personally.
What is the ice on the dock, what's the water line, like average layer of that?
So, that's something we're working on right now. Just because we gotta also contend with the river and if there's floods, we don't want it to get flopped, swamped all the time, so that is something that's...
The current dock is really high, you know?
Yes.
Except for when it's flooded. Are you guys paying attention to the water chart of the raft or whatever else in Boise? I used to tell you that it's gotten finer, but they can do...
Thank you.
I'm wondering what about sewer and water? Where is it that you're going to be able to do that? And where, where is the hookup going to be? That is a very limited area.
Right now, we're still looking at how we're gonna develop that, but they do have portable contained sewer pump out units that can be wheeled down the dock, unloaded and then brought up and inducted into the station. The general thought is we'll extend the, down by the landing, we'll have a smaller station, a grinder station that the city will have to pump into the sewer system. So, the unit will be able to be run down the dock and then brought back and then discharged into the sewer system. None of that's been finalized yet and as those details develop, you know, it's...
That sounds like we have to have somebody, you know, hire somebody to do that kind of thing or...
Potentially, if that's the direction we go, yeah.
Alright, and how about rest areas or bathrooms or that? If you're, you have ADA availability, you also have to have rest areas, right?
I'm not aware of that.
I believe that was included on the grant also.
Okay, we'll have to check that out.
Yes, Jenny?
Okay, I really like what you guys put together, but my public comment concerning the design of it is that it's too big for our bay. Everything there, the amenities, all the things, the lighting, everything's beautiful, but the general consensus among a portion of our community is that it's too large of a design. When Tom Doherty presented to the LCCMR, the most recently, Representative Eklund had asked him if the project was scalable and he said that it was. So, if that is something the community feels that the project is great as it is, but wants it smaller, is that something that's architecturally possible with the design we're currently at?
I think there's some elements that are scalable, but there are other things that we do wanna be careful about. For instance, the width of the main dock, just to make sure that it's wide enough to actually get a maintenance vehicle out there. We just don't want it to be too narrow.
So, maybe the width isn't necessarily what I'm going for, it's just the length of length of the bay. Widths, I understand, especially structurally with the ice and I grew up in that bay, so I know what it can look like on that year. It's just that comments, people that have called me, you know, as a member of the council that they were concerned that it's just something that's designed for Lake Superior and maybe it should be scaled down for our little bay. Because those renderings, they're beautiful, but I don't think they capture like on a Google Earth look down what it would actually look like. And maybe it is and I'm mistaken on that, but that's just a public comment that I would like to make is that people feel that, it's not that they don't want this, this design, it's that they feel that it's too large for the bay that we have.
Can I ask a question? What is the size you guys feel is reasonable? And I'm just saying as a general question.
I don't, I don't have an answer for that, but I would say that what's been communicated to me is that having fingers like that, similar to what we see up in Kettle Falls, where you can jam a lot of boats in there for the day. We bring people in to drink at the bars or eat or shopping, whatever is up being downtown Rainier, to be able to pack those boats in for people doing day trips and whatnot. So, that's what's been communicated to me is they want, they want a longer dock and more fingers, but they feel that that's just too big.
What is the, what is the design I did here? What is the design that's right around 16, 18?
10. The main dock, the main dock is 23, 20 feet, sorry, 20 feet wide.
The existed is...
That's right.
So, you're just being...
Excellent.
Same as 16, like, 16 yards, 18? So, really, it's the same width as we're saying right now, but 18 at times, right? Yes. So that gives you a concept of what it is, and what it is now. You know, can I ask about the soft landing? You know, it sounds like a really nice idea, however, you know, they talk about backing up for the soft landing, well, one of the big complaints about getting rid of the boat launch down there, were cars backing up there, and the danger to children, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So what would seem like the soft landing is okay, but not vehicles, to be able to put those kayaks, or mules, or whatever you want. That's my problem, because that is not a safe area to have.
So, to piggyback on what Jen said, because that was one of my big concerns, but you said that, you know, the size, the overall size is kind of one of my concerns, and you said you guys are still kind of preliminary design phases, and obviously there's, there's been some, you know, thus far, there's some funding, it was slowed off. Would that factor into, you know, like, how far along are you with the design? Obviously, you've got renderings and done a lot of work, but how does that factor into your ability to scale some things, and does the funding come into play there too, where you say, okay, well, let's design a more reasonable size, that, you know, something in between this and what we currently have, to be able to work with funding and things like that a little easier?
I think, part of, let's go back on the grant language, as what you're committed to, the grant money that you have. Certainly, if the city wanted to change courses, that things could be considered, but right now, we've taken it, you know, to our preliminary, like I said, in a couple of months, we can finish this design and submit a permitting, and that's, that's the intent.
The initial LCCMR grant that we got, that's secured, is that dependent on this design? Because, you know, my understanding is that one of the reasons that this design is to be as large as it is, was to be able to have a chance of the big grant, the national grant, right? And that's, yeah, the federal, but, you know, is that initial LCCMR grant that was secured, is that tied to this size, or would that, or would they be flexible?
Yeah, I would have to look at the grant language, but Cheryl, do you have some info on this?
There's no specific sizes in the grant language.
Okay.
It's, it is, it's drop it off, it accommodates 20, 26 feet of water, or a total of, you can have.
Okay. So, you see, more than might be, you're be able to potentially scale it down and still use that grant funding?
Yeah, unless there's a clause in there that we're not aware of, like what Cheryl's saying.
And then along with the, sorry, one more thing, along with the grant funding that we're going forth and the cost, obviously, things have, costs have gone up significantly over the last, you know, since everything was originally planned for and budgeted for. What is that, how, how has that changed? Has there been much digging into that, or?
You know, we'll, we'll update the cost when we get further design, but right now, we feel fairly comfortable in the grant that's secured, in the grant receiving, that we'll be able to build this facility. You know, plus or minus, you know, but right now, everything appears to be lining up with the budget, but I can't predict the future in costs.
Okay, so, the T is 200 feet long, I just wanted to get that down, does it actually have a cost per foot of...
It, it's in the wars, yeah, but that's something that, that's...
So, going on the narrow, the length and the width of the main dock, it's okay, but 200 feet of dock, it might be a little expensive to maybe some people that live around there, but if it's shorter, you know, we've got, cut it on up to, for helping, right?
Right, I think that that kind of goes back to the question of scalability too, but that certainly, if we get a little bit further along and start getting deeper into the costs and committing greater details, we'll have a better, better handle.
One thing I noticed, because I can't hear Cheryl on these Google, when we actually sketch in, here, 250, 300, with an oval, so, you can't, please, you can just draw one out on your iPad, anything you can actually see, it'll start to scale, and tweak it to 200, tweak it to 300, every hundred period, you can put it in on Google Earth, and you can do a Google call, picture of all of those in the A, or B, so. And as far as the height of these boaters, you know, I know we've got a little issue with the tide water, and we've verified the dock is chipped on the edge of the thing, so we wouldn't have to get any shells over there, but with the floating system like this, you're gonna be at a part of the level, basically $40, so, you know, basically, might, what for access, it's not a mission, say, we can buy it, you can put it maybe one foot. And this is my problem.
I just want to make a quick one. One is, we might be able to have gout's back here, with having the stock space, samples, or the two part filled in. They do it every Wednesday, you know, Amanda shut down, they haven't been able to do it, but if this is available, you might get the gout's back open. And then the other thing is, if you go any shorter, I mean, that's blocking our access, Tara's access, to the water. So, if you go any shorter, there's no way you're able to navigate to our docks. So, going out that far, makes it available that you can still navigate to our dock, Tara's dock, Amanda's dock, go shorter, you're blocking that up.
Okay, now, I did find in here in front of the grant, that it says here that there will be room for 18 overnight protected slips and eight daytime slips. Well, if you figure out that that's 200 feet long, and that it has that area that comes out, probably the most boats you could get on that farther side would only be six, or 26 foot boats, that, I mean, unless my man is for that. So, I mean, this is, according to what the comp, what the grant says, and it's going to be there, here, two million days.
Which grant is that?
That would be this grant.
The LCCMR?
Um, well, yes, yes. I'm looking at it right here, and it says the completion date is 2023, so, for the dock facility. This is the dock construction. And here, I'll show it to you, if you can.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'm here reading it off, I just, I wanted to know where you're getting that from.
So, that's where I'm getting it from, it says, and again, I'm saying that that's 200 feet, and your boats are 26 feet, I think the most you could get on that one side is six, and then I suppose you could probably get maybe six on this side too.
Yeah, I would caution you, Susan, that that grant has been written, you know, because I can tell from what you're saying, if you're looking at the, the way the current grant was submitted to LCCMR, or if that was the original...
This was the 220 main proposal. I don't think the city is going to give up its, right, the regulate, the ordinance, whether it's through, you know, the county, the city, the government will be obligated to give up its ordinance, so, I'm telling you.
I might be able to help clear this up a little bit. The first grant that we applied to was called the Big Grant, that was a federal grant, and in that, there was specific language that said extra boats, that had to be 26 feet longer, we had to provide up to, we couldn't let anybody stay overnight for any model that's supposed to be right. So we went away from the Big Grant, because it was real competitive, we weren't getting a lot of cooperation from the DNR, we didn't have a lot of people, but then the DNR that could help us get the grant, it's through the DNR's house and onto the federal, US Fish and Wildlife to decide, so we moved away from that, and went to the LCCMR and bond it. So, the, the most concerns about that language from the Big Grant aren't valid anymore, because we're not fully under the Big Grant, so we, you know, you can basically kind of take that off the table. And then the other thing that the steering committee talked about was, you know, trying to generate revenue for the city to cover deferred maintenance, and this will be left up to the city council to decide, I believe that, this will offer overnight stays, and so there's some good questions about how we do that. Well, whenever I go on vacation, I'm going to water, going to look at the areas, I try to use my way on the big boats, both rides, or fishing, or whatever, but there's real simple ways to go, and they feel it has a very simple process that they use, you can go on their, their city website and look at it. And what I just saw when I was in South Florida, this printer, was similar to a parking key house, you go into the community, you put a card in there if you're gonna stay overnight, you put the number of stays, take a ticket, and stick it on the dashboard. So, it's that simple, and there's a million different ways you can do this, when this comes to fruition, and you can have something so nice, it's gonna be absolutely incredible, and be enjoyed for generations to come, and I believe that. For watching the steering committee work, and multiple citizens at the aid, they, they negotiated and argued and struggled with different things, and they, they came to agreement, brought this, this farmer to the city, I, I think that we got there as a good way to go.
I like that you say, I love your concept. This is a, this is a really, really project that we're pretty good with, I think everything you put in there was really nice, not being able to have larger boats and smaller boats, as well as kayaks and, and, and our, our vehicles, being able to access the land as well, I think it's a great asset for this area. I would like to really see the visual from the Rainier Beach, actually, can you pull that right back up, please? So, this is at 270 feet, 250 feet, 250?
And there's still a line, it's 280, right?
Actually, you...
It's 250.
I should, I misspoke there, I think it's 250 to the, to the T, and then you have the T.
The T is 100 feet longer.
So it's 278 feet.
So it'd be, I think the T is 16 feet wide, it's gonna be 266, probably, to the Mary.
And I'm just, you know, I'm taking a look here at Google Maps, and you can see, there's probably another 200 plus feet outside of land, going in that direction, around Oak Street there, so I feel like the rendering here shows 250 feet out or so, I still feel like we can go another 200 feet backwards, and if you're not gonna hit anything, my personal, that's just me, I'm not...
But yours better.
Yeah, we had, sorry, I was on the steering committee also.
We don't want that.
And then, one of the things I would point out is, you know, those that remember the Rondinoo Dock across the river, that was 300 feet, it was there for a long, long time, didn't seem to impede the bay. I, you know, like that's what you pointed out, I agree with that, I don't think that the dock is only powering the bay, and I would really, I think that overhead look would, would definitely be helpful, that, you know, kind of put that, that spatial idea together, but, you know, I would say, just like Bayfield, I haven't been there, I've heard wonderful things about it, you know, we are a portside community, we're a marine community, we're in America, we got the river on one side, we got the lake on the other, I think we should have world-class facilities, and this is, this is, to me, this is a world-class, you know, project, it would be like, you know, I think it will bring businesses into the city, into Rainier, it'll be a great amenity, I just, I, you know, I can't say enough about it, how important I think it is, and also, economic growth is always directly related to infrastructure. This is infrastructure, just like someone else said, this is something that will be, or Tom, I think, said, something that will be enjoyed by families and visitors in Rainier for generations, so I think it's a good investment.
You know, one thing I might, might clarify, I see a lot of size seems to be a real issue here, building a good bike is okay right now, but every cost, like, make a suggestion for Nick, a maintenance man, he can come to his traffic homes, basically turn off their phone off.
I think that very...
Lay it up, and you could actually see...
We did actually, Tom paced it off, and they put it on some laugh over there.
Yeah, there's some laugh over there. Make one more comment, everybody before you leave, make sure that you either write your comments down, or you email the clerk, any comments you may have, and she's gonna try to get these photos on the city website also, so you can go on there and look at them, and have other people go look at them too, right?
I think the goal here is, is to fuel communities, so it's getting practically healthy, and you know, so, you know, it's like a little couch, you want the right size for the house, you know, too big, too small, you don't want to put all the plates, but you made a valid point, there has to be certain lengths so they can navigate their docks too, so, that's a tip, of course, you've actually seen it, you need to tweak it a little bit, sometimes just a few feet, either way, maybe it's right, you know, in terms of changing the whole of your house, same here.
I have a question, I understand the finance, but I don't think from the, from the bonding, you got to turn the, the bond, you could put the bond...
So that... Bonding bill?
Yeah, that would be the state legislature bonding bill.
It's essentially a grant.
It's more limited, people are...
Yeah.
It's essentially...
Yeah, so that's the backup to the LCCMR, they submitted for the LCCMR money and the same amount for bonding, hoping that one of the two grants comes through. Yeah, it's not a general obligation, but...
The LCCMR did not vote for any grants this year, none, zero.
It hasn't been determined?
That's why it's gone, yes, the decision was made at the end of December, they did not vote for any of the grants, so all those went to the legislature for bonding events. I have one question about erosion, and I'm just wondering, I mean, people are saying that there's not gonna be erosion, but, well, currently in the legislature, there's a lot of discussion about people getting driver's licenses for, for boats, for big boats that cause so many waves to come in, and the impact upon the land and the erosion, and that's what's being discussed at a big level, on the legislature right now, and they're real concerned about those big boats that create all the waves and everything, and they're in fact, so I'm just wondering, if you have a place for big boats, how can you help with that erosion problems?
Well, just to, just saying, you have that buoy out there, that could obviously add like a...
I'm asking the engineers.
Sorry. You don't have to pick on the engineers.
I'm asking the engineers, yeah.
What you could consider is like an O-A, I don't know if there's an O-A zone right now, but that would seem to make sense, especially, even the boats part of the docks, you want people flying by.
Another question, engineering question, no, no, I have no product to just now quarter, but the new crib style, what is it, bin?
Bin wall. Bin walls.
Bin walls? I mean, I don't know any of the bottom, I don't know if anybody else here does, and so what? What's that?
It, it's basically a steel enclosure.
A crib?
So, it would be a man...
Steel, what else?
No, it's built in rock.
Big, like, big rock, big shot rock?
Uh, probably a little bit smaller, just so you can get, you don't have too many points in. Also added to that, in the design of the steelwood rock, there's also spillage on the outside of the bin wall, so that creates more strength to the bin wall, but also creates the shank effect.
Were they being used, so, on Mississippi River, or what?
Yeah, all, all over Great Lakes and lots and lots of them.
Yeah, all, all over Great Lakes and lots of rock, yeah. And it's really intended for this, a lot of rough water and, and that guys.
It's going to rock, it's going to take a lot of time. Well, I bet Mary does.
And we encourage people to, to write down comments too, that we can, uh, put on record for, um, any ideas or likes, dislikes that you have, and then we'll, we'll sit back down with the steering committee and talk about the next steps.
Is there any chance that at the end of the true dock, of the T, that we could have artificial light bulbs?
Put that comment in there, please, let's do it.
Is there any chance that we could change the name of this tour, Narina? Because it's not a safe harbor up here, it's a arena.
That's the one question we had for you, is, you know, everyone's got a different name for this thing, if you have some good names, suggestions.
Arena, let's just call it.
Arena.
So, yachter.
Yachter, arena ports, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different names, but, uh, uh, put suggestions into the steering committee and, uh, we can name it whatever this community wants. I, you know, I, I honestly think it, it could definitely qualify for something better than calling it a dock, so.
Thank you. How about gray water? Do you expect, I mean, you know, people use this kind of arenas, yachters, a lot, over the big lakes and, and, they've already brought, you know, any dock, they're using gray water, gray water.
Yeah.
So, is there any way here, also, to control that or?
I mean, the, the city has whatever ordinance they can, um, you know, as far as discharging or something like that on their facility. Um, other than that, I think the PCA is not going to be changing, um, regulations on gray water. Tom, are you aware of that?
It's a, it's kind of a difficult, uh, the coast guard granted a permanent exemption to recreational watercraft, you know, later than gray water. And when you think about gray water, that means any kind of water that's used on a vessel or even hits a vessel and runs into your field, runs off the deck, that's technically gray water. So it's kind of a complex issue that, that happens at the end. You know, nowadays you see on two of, or first nanny size, they have a sink on them or a cabin cruiser, or even your, uh, one fishing boat comes a bit of, uh, pressure bottom coming back for all these guys. So it's going to be a difficult task to try and hold some type of census. One thing that's stated in some of the, they did a lot of time ago, and, you know, I was at the awareness of summer, told you, of nineteen seventy-two, uh, they make sure that all the soles that we use, uh, on different fronts like that, or Austin, Andrew, through, kind of set a standard for that country. They're going back then, so it's sort of some things that, that, which, and, but, we were talking about the base pump system, um, the system I mentioned on dock, if you, like, we have a similar to it in our facility, the person will pull up to it. My suggestion is that it's pretty, I don't know, send people to use it, if you're charging for it and the less, it's just, right? Um, when you, when you get a federally funded base pump system, you only charge six pumps of pump out anyway, uh, we have to apply for a grant to be federally for that, but I think it goes into the system and then it gets the higher up pump, but it needs, it goes into the bay, then into the system, so it's safe, there's, there's no cleaning or cleaning, so.
On the particular grounds here, I see your gold handling money, and then there's also some drawn to show six, seven, basically three months. I guess I'm making it more out of the audience who feels, you know, you see the old one like that, or some of the, what makes you feel within the audience?
Paul, if we put the.
We're not lights at all.
If we put like the artificial or the, that kind of light bulbs down, yeah, and then you have a little bit of light.
I've already forgotten a little bit of light.
Into the sky or something like that.
Let's just see a show of hands, who likes blue lights, who likes.
Well, because the real, otherwise provides enough light.
I think it would be ideal if the city of Rainier could vote on whether or not they want this, that's why.
Are there any more questions today?
Yeah, one more question, maybe you can refer to the council or the mayor, how much do you anticipate charging for a boat dock?
If anyone has anything else they want to write down, please do, I appreciate everyone coming up today, great conversation. Um, we're here while we're backing up, before you come and ask us a question directly, like, again, thank you very much.